Call a regular council meeting to order if everybody could stand again. Different meeting, I don't know. Say it twice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody could stay standing. If we can get a moment of silence for another legend that the county lost, Judge Mary Harper. So if we could give a moment of silence, you know, to her and her family. Thank you. Yes, we've lost a couple legends. Judge Harper, Bob Paparog, do you guys remember it? So, but, all right, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick.
Present.
Councilmember Brechner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Seven present.
All right, we've got a quorum. Approval of regular council minutes for July 26, 2022.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion is second on the floor, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. First reading, Madam Auditor.
Notice the taxpayers have proposed additional appropriations notices hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in Porter County Government Administration Building located 155 Indiana Avenue of Alperizo on September 20, 2022, beginning at 5:30 p.m. to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year 2022, and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General Fund Sheriff Overtime $20,000. County Court Jurors' Expenses $30,000. Jail 1217 Overtime a Reduction of $20,000. Firearms Training Fund Other Equipment $4,000. Health Department Fund Salaries $50,000. FICA $3,900. Perf $6,000. Motor Vehicles $225,000. Surveyor Perpetuation Fund Other Equipment $27,000. Sheriff DEA Proceeds Fund Motor Vehicles $65,000. 21.027 ARPA COVID Fiscal Recovery. Medical Life Insurance $500,000. Contractual $7,618,188. ARP Assistance $10,646,25. Other Mobile Equipment $12,150. Data Processing Equipment $27,846. Another Equipment $300,575. Court Interpreter Grant Fund Interpreter $9,000. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have the right to be heard thereon. The appropriation adjustments is finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance where applicable. The DLGF will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made. Biggie Vanag, Auditor of Porter County, Public, September 9, 2022. And that completes first reading.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. All right, normally we would get right into the agenda, but, you know, this has been a discussion of the council, you know, amongst ourselves for a little while, a rules of conduct for council meetings. So, you know, in light of, you know, it seems like politics are being played, we want to just keep things, you know, moving forward as, you know, we come here to conduct business. So, um, we're going to implement some, a policy for, you know, speaking at the meeting, and then we'll see how it goes. We'll, you know, like everything, we'll, we'll adjust it if it needs to be adjusting. But I'll read real fast, you know, for anybody that wants to speak. And some of the thought process was to do it after first reading because, you know, you're going to speak on an agenda item, and if you want to speak to the council, you know, make a comment or statement, then you do it before we vote. That's kind of the thought process. But I know talking to Mike, he says they still do it at the end in City of Valpo, so we'll, we'll give it a try here and see where it goes. But I'll read it real fast. The public comment session, which will immediately follow first reading, is provided as an opportunity for residents to address the Porter County Council about agenda items. Participation is encouraged. However, to respect others who wish to speak, public comment is not intended to be public conversation. Before speaking, a person must provide their name and address. Exception may be considered if requested by emailing the council, council@portercounty.org prior to the commencement of the meeting. A speaker will be given a reasonable amount of time, since as determined by the council president, to make a comment and/or express an opinion. No person will be recognized more than once per meeting. All speakers must remain at the podium unless an exception is granted by the council president. Any speaker that engages in personal attacks and/or acts in an uncivil manner will be stopped and may be prohibited from future opportunities to publicly address the council. The Porter County Council members and county staff are available after the meetings for questions or, and more extended discussions. So in the podium, we set the podium up over there. So, you know, I'm not going to sit here with a watch, but, you know, two minutes roughly in there, you know, for somebody to make a comment, you know, or speak, so, you know, on an agenda item, you know, and it says that, I believe, that, you know, agenda item. So it's specific to what we're going to vote on tonight. So I don't know what the council, what you guys think of that? If you want to adopt this as a policy tonight?
We have to make a motion.
Yeah, you know, Mr. President, you know, in an effort to make sure that our meetings are effective and productive and respectful, I think these, these procedures are helpful. I mean, we, we obviously want to know what's on the minds of the residents. We want to give them an opportunity to speak, and, and, and we promise, we promise to listen. And that mutual respect or understanding is all predicated on the willingness to, to listen. And so we're here, we're here to listen, but we're also here to conduct a meeting. And so to that, to that end, I'd like to make a motion to adopt these procedures or this protocol to all of our county council meetings going forward, effective immediately.
Second.
It's a motion is second on the floor. Further discussion?
I was just clarifying. Did you say we're going to have this at the end as well, where they could speak, or no?
No, the purpose would be, you know, at the beginning.
Well, I thought you mentioned Valpo does it at the end.
Well, no, I said if, if it doesn't, if we don't think it works, maybe we can switch it. We can change the policy.
Mr. President, so thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Any further discussion? All in favor of implementing these rules of conduct for council meetings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So with that said, with a new policy in place, and if anybody would like to address the, the council on an agenda item, the podium is there. Just again, state your name and address, and give you a couple minutes to talk about agenda item.
Good evening, council members. My name's Kim Spohearty. I reside at 516 Carriage Lane, Westville, Indiana, 46391, unincorporated Porter County. So we are actually the Carriage Hill subdivision that you guys have all seen in the media, where we've had sinkhole issues, and specifically one of our neighbors down the road where they were actually in their vehicle, drove up into their driveway, and the whole vehicle actually sank. Could not be towed out, they actually had to be craned out of that hole. So even to this date, you can see the remnants, their driveway is still not completely normal. And this is, I think, the third or fourth, and I'm sure some of the other members can, can kind of state, because they've got the issues in the yard. So there's many other sinkhole issues going on. So I just want to address the council on two things and look at the, the agenda items for, I think it's the ARPA fund, I believe. I would like to kind of hopefully make a motion to pull us out of that fund and treat us as a separate emergency issue and put us on a priority one project. Because of these issues that are happening, it's, it's a safety concern, the road's a mess, and the last thing we need is a school bus or kids to fall into a hole, and now we've got national news on our hands. Any questions for me? I'm happy to answer that, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council?
My name's Joan Miller, live in Valperizo. I just had a couple questions. When will the Memorial Opera House project be put on the agenda? The other one is, how much is the project up to you at this point?
I don't think it's on the agenda. So if you want to address something that's on the agenda, please go ahead.
Well, those were just the questions that I was asking. So that's, you're just saying that if it's not on the agenda, you don't reply? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council?
David Schneider, 525 Carriage Lane. So that's the driveway she's referring to. You know, that's a pretty tragic thing. When you see it on your ring, you guys have all seen it. The, the video was shown. So when you watch that while you're sitting at work, and, you know, you watch your wife and your daughter trying to get out of your car, not a good thing. So this has been going on for three years now. You know, do I fall in the hole when I'm mowing my lawn? I mean, I was out there that morning, still blowing my driveway, plowing it with a four-wheeler. Could have been me flipped over in that hole. I think we need to address this, we really do. And we need to, like, address it soon. Because it's just a matter of time before somebody really gets hurt in one of these sinkholes, or, you know, anything of that nature. I mean, like I said, my driveway's still not fixed, still driving over gravel, going to snow, so am I just supposed to shoot rocks at my neighbors? Or sit out there and shovel all day long when the snowplow comes through? Because I can't use a snow blower? I mean, just little things like that. So I think we need to address this issue, like, quickly, not wait till the last minute. If they're waiting on this fund, then not going to happen until next year, but let's maybe start getting all the materials. Everybody knows with COVID and all this bull, bull stuff, that you can't get stuff, right? So you guys say, hey, yeah, we're good in July next year, and we've got to wait three more months for pipe because you can't get it. Well, they don't have the money to get it. It's all spent on different stuff. Right? So right now, I drive home, I drive past 900, what are they doing? They're tearing up that road and they're repaving it. A block from my neighborhood. We're spending money, we're repaving that, but yet our driveways are falling in, our yards are falling in. It's a big issue, really is. So, I mean, I really want you guys to think about it, take it to heart. Imagine if it was your wife and your daughter driving the driveway, and you're watching it work, and you're 45 minutes away. You can't get to them, you can't help them. And you're trying to reach any neighbor you can to say, hey, help my wife and help my kids, get them out of that car. So think about that. I mean, that's, it's not something to take lightly anymore. It's been going on for a while. So I'd appreciate it if you guys just get together and really get this on the docket. Let's, let's make this happen, because it really needs to happen. All right? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Gurren, 539 Carriage Lane. Same issues as everybody else has had. I've been there over 20 years now. We have been complaining about the water issues coming from the farm field through our side yards for 15 years. Our street gets so flooded with water because there's nowhere for it to go, the kids literally can canoe and kayak down our street during some storms. We've spent thousands of dollars to keep the water out of our basement. Again, and we've been griping and complaining to the city for years and years and years. And it comes to the point where finally, you know, the Schneider's driveway collapses. That could have been tragic. And it comes to that for finding somebody to get a bell or a whistle, something to go, holy cow, we might have issues there. Our roads are horrendous. At the end of our driveway, from the first freeze to the thaw, we've got ice that's five or six inches thick. Our sons go out there with sledgehammers, everything to break it up. The snowplow driver knows that the end of our driveway is such a mess, that he goes so slow so he doesn't blow up our mail bags with ice. We need to get this fixed. Again, the money's there. Help us out. Again, like Dave said, your children, your grandchildren, that's what we have issues with. We don't want to see them hurt. Help us, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmen and women, I am Nicole Hayden. I live at 520 Carriage Lane, same subdivision. I have two very small children, a three-month-old and a two-year-old. And had that happened to me, I am their next-door neighbor, I would not have been able to get my children out of that vehicle. Both of the back doors were jammed shut. My dad thankfully was at home, heard them scream, and was able to pull the driver out of the driver window. She was scared crapless because she didn't know if she let go of that brake, if the car was going to slam down more, causing that sinkhole to get bigger. Was she going to go completely down? That's something that a 17-year-old should never have to worry about, and I'm sure she is definitely traumatized, as if, as in their dad, who had to watch it on their Ring camera while he was 50 minutes away at work. It's something that is just gradually getting worse and worse. I take my children for walks every night, and I can see different driveways that you can just tell by the concrete. It's moving, something is going to happen. This is the third time that it has happened. Every about a year and a half, this happens. It was my parents who lived across the street from me first, then it was a neighbor down the road, about four houses down. So it's not just one located area, it is the entire drain. As we've looked up blueprints with the waste, the waste people that have come to help us, we've noticed and realized that what the county back 25 years ago signed off on, that was not done correctly. We need something to happen for its children. I don't want it to be me and my children. It's sad that you have to drive home. Home is supposed to be your safe place. And I'm scared to death to drive on my driveway every day. And that, there's something has to happen, or something's going to have to happen for us to feel safe. And we need to just fix it properly instead of doing patches, because it's just going to, in the long run, cost you guys more and more money doing these patch jobs. We just need to get it done and get it fixed and make our whole, you know, neighborhood feel safe again. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council before we move on? All right, thank you.
Sorry, and I think it'd be appropriate to comment on that public comment. And I can tell you, with the Carriage Hills subdivision, the, there's no excuse for the condition of, of the roads and the stormwater management out there. And it was a subdivision that was built 25 years ago, and clearly wasn't built correctly at that time, didn't have the appropriate oversight to make sure it was done correctly. And so we're, we're forced to deal with it today, and we will deal with it. And I think a lot of what this council has experienced, and I, and I can speak since 2014, is the sins of our forefathers, where a lot of things could have been done, should have been done, should have been done right, should have had more oversight, should have done correctly so that we wouldn't have negative long-term effects, where we pass it on to the next generation of council members and so forth. And so we have had, since, again, speaking since 2014, we've had a history of taking care of, taking care of our infrastructure. That's been a focus of this council, and I know it's been a focus of the county commissioner's office as well. And we have put a significant amount of time into not only our capital projects throughout, throughout the county, and most of you know what many of those projects were. We had crumbling bridges, we had bridges where we didn't feel confident taking cars, let alone buses, school buses across them. We've had failing roads, a significant amount of road problems to deal with and face. Stormwater management wasn't much of a topic of conversation prior to the development of the Department of Development and Stormwater Management team that was established in 2016, where we had, for those of you who might remember, the South Haven area, where there literally, if you talk about paddle boats and boats going down the middle of the road, that's the condition that South Haven was. And that's a big area with a lot of roads and a lot of stormwater management to take care of. And proud to say that we've, we've tackled that. It's not finished, but we put a heck of a lot of time and effort and money into taking care of those needs. So, so whether it be bridges, roads, stormwater, whether it be the Expo Center that was invested in very heavily, the, our own, very own courthouse, put a significant amount of money into the renovation of the courthouse. The North Annex Facility, put a significant amount of money into that to take care of our capital assets. 157 Franklin, 157 Franklin was another building that we invested a significant amount of money to make it what it is today. The Animal Shelter was another, another project that we did. So we have focused on, since 2014, the importance, the importance of taking care of what, what the county owns and what the county should take care of. And in this particular case with Carriage Hills, it's clear that we have another issue to take care of, and I, and I'm confident, and I'm confident that we will. But it, it speaks to the significant, I think, of the problems that exist throughout the county, because the bridges are all safe, so you know, that's a victory. The roads are not all repaired to the extent that we'd like them to be repaired, but we've got a plan for that. Stormwater is a significant, significant topic throughout the entire, throughout the entire county, some areas more, more severe than others. And, and we're continuing to work on that. And I think our emphasis has been to say that we're going to take care of county needs first and foremost, that's our, that's our charge. And, and we're going to continue to do, continue to do just that. So we have a couple of things that aren't, that are on the docket that we haven't gotten to yet in terms of capital assets that we own. One is the sheriff, the jail is something that is in need of repair. It's at that age where investments need to be made. We've got the center, center garage, which hasn't been touched in quite some time. That's another facility that needs significant investment. And then we also have the, the Memorial Opera House is another county asset that needs to be, and should be cared for, along with the Porter, what was the Porter County Museum. That's another building that the county owns, that it's our obligation, it's our responsibility to take care of all of those things. And, and I can say, when we talk about infrastructure, and when we talk about taking care of buildings and things that the county owns, I, I'm convinced that there's been more work done in the last seven and a half years to that, to that end than was done in the prior 20. And so we're proud of that, we're not proud of the situation in Carriage Hills, and, and we will, we will no doubt take care of that problem.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. I'm sure we'll get into that discussion, you know, a little bit more, now that we're speaking on that. So let's, let's roll through. Judge Clymer, you've got a...
He said we just go to the end, Clymer on the end.
No, this is your seat, right there. Come on up, Judge. The General Fund Additional $30,000 to jury expenses. There's, and there's two additionals here. The reason appropriation needed to cover jury pay and expenses, the jury fund 2506 not bringing in enough revenue at this time. The Court Interpreter Grant Fund also additional $9,000 to interpreter. The reason appropriation needed to pay court interpreter through the end of 2022.
Take the motion on both additionals?
Second. There's a motion in a couple seconds on the two additionals. Discussion. No discussion? Can we get a roll call on the two additionals?
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brechner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you all. The Supreme Court is addressing court fees. Court fees may go up next year. If court fees may go up, then the money that comes into that fund from court fees should go up as well next year. The court fees are established by the Supreme Court, so we're kind of, our hands are tied by theirs. But thank you, this should take care of us through the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
E-911. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Just a reminder that every time you approve an additional appropriation in a property tax-supported fund, it will affect the budget process. I did build in this additional in the general fund in that budget projection that I gave.
Is this the only one? Did you do the other ones too that are coming up?
From the property tax, yes.
So we're spending down next year's money, all right?
Yep.
Every time you do an additional appropriation out of a property tax.
E-911. Statewide E-911 fund. There's a transfer, $50,000 from salaries to overtime. Reason, transfer needed to augment overtime budget shortage due to recent full-time employment losses. Hello?
Hello?
So there's a request in front of you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion, a second on the floor, discussion.
Could, could you give us a brief summary of where we're at? It looks like we've got full-time employment losses. So can you give us an idea of how many positions, and how long has that been, and what are we doing to find those people?
It's a very fluid process in the 911 center. Since I've had the chair, we've actually, I'd like to give the good news first. We've been able to hire four new dispatchers, all with experience, and they, we've been able to expedite their training because they have knowledge. And it's going very well. They're all still here. Statistically, you usually have about less than half of your trainees succeed through the training program. But we've been very blessed to have all four succeeding. Two are already almost completely finished. One is finished, one's nearing finishing, and then two others we foresee finishing as well. We've also been fortunate enough to bring back two of our part-time employees. They've wanted to go full-time. So that's six full-time positions that we've been able to essentially create to fill our losses that we've had as well. And if you are familiar with the statistic I gave before, we have had several employees leave over the last year and a half, actually, it's about year and nine months now since the beginning of 2021, we're at 18 now. So although we're picking up and we're, we're filling those empty seats, we're, it's, it's kind of this revolving door, so it's a struggle.
So how many, help me out, how many do we have currently?
Let's see, 28. Where are we with our two, our two that just came back?
28. With those two, it was 26.
We're still short though, because we're...
We have 36 salaries available.
36 salaries, so we're at 28 now? 28. We have 28, but there's, we're budgeted for 36.
And the eight, it sounds like you're short eight currently.
Yes.
And the six that are in training, does that take away from the eight?
No, they're included.
They're included in the 28?
They're included in the 28, yes, full-time.
So you're still in the market for eight more?
Yes, we are.
And how do we go about finding those people?
We have a considerable applicant pool. The challenges we face in the 911 center are training. For someone without experience, generally it's six months, but we've had to kind of juggle our staffing. So 911 goes in phases. So if you're released from a call-taking phase, you can, you can essentially be used in a position as a dispatcher to augment a shortage in another area. What that does is it helps us temporarily, but as you can imagine, it stalls their training process. So ideally, if we could complete their training process in the six months that we foresee it taking, we would be, it would be an easier definition for you. But because of the fact that we're juggling, people are leaving, we're using them where they're available to be used. Right now, we have two that started, we had four that started in February.
February was their academy phase, which was a month.
Then they should have moved into their on-the-floor training, which they did. But they're still in their training phase because we've had to continue placing them in spots where they're, they've been trained and they're able to help out. So they're not, they're somewhat trained and able to be used, but not entirely.
I would assume that we're not unique in the sense of the only 911 center that has this struggle, or are we?
this struggle, or are we?
We aren't.
And are there any other creative or unique ways that other departments are handling it?
That's interesting, because I'm actually hunting for statistics. There's different scheduling options that we can look at to try to fill in these shortages, but it's a nationwide thing. 911 is a very unique career, and the average dispatch tenure is five years. So that tells you a little bit about people that are coming into dispatch. So it's kind of been, from what I've seen in my tenure, challenging all around.
I just got some recent statistics today from a webinar put on by AppCo. The average turnover rate for a 911 center is 29%. That's pretty high. And two-thirds of 911 centers staff is less than five years' experience.
And how does our turnover compare to that 29%?
I'd have to actually dig for those statistics. I couldn't give them to you offhand. I can tell you confidently that as far as training, we have about a 40% success rate with our training right now. Make it out of training.
What would happen, could you feel like your department could continue to function if you have two of those people in their training, instead of using them because you are short? You have other girls covering, you have other people covering overtime. Is that correct?
We do, and that's interesting that you bring that up. I can give you an example of this past weekend. We actually had nearly half of our dispatch center, those that were fully released dispatchers, fill in for shortages. And so, yes, it would be, ideally, it would be great to keep them in their training, get them out of that training, utilize them. But with our minimums where they are, obviously, we can't drop below minimum to serve the county. And when we're at six on days and five on nights, we have to kind of resort to stalling their training in order to augment the empty chairs and the staffing minimums we have.
We have to keep in mind too, not to overwork our staff. You know, they're working overtime, they're being mandated. That affects morale. We have to consider that as well.
You know, it seems like this has been an ongoing problem. I've been here a few more years, and back then, it was the same problem. You have all of these empty, it's unfortunate that we can't come up with a problem to solve it. It's a high stress.
Yes.
Very high-stressed job.
It's a very unique, if you consider it from, I've been talking a lot about this, as you can imagine. And I like to consider 911 dispatchers the project managers of public safety, because we all are familiar in one way or another with project management. And that is essentially the job of the dispatcher. We get the problem. We are literally the first first responders. And if you consider every other discipline involved in public safety, every single aspect knows or has an idea of what they're responding to some way. Police officers know what they're responding to, and firefighters know what they're responding to. They have a brief overview of it. In a dispatcher's, from a dispatcher's perspective, we never know at any moment of every single day, our job is what is coming next. And Paige actually is presenting at the NINA conference next week, and she's done a very intensive study on stress and the stress in the 911 dispatcher's life and how to combat that. And she has statistics about PTSD that's prevalent with dispatchers that is relatively, until recently, unknown. So there are a lot of things in this career that I think aren't really out there for people to understand, just simply because we're still kind of a hidden occupation, a hidden career, one that's kind of behind the curtain. And so these are challenges, but again, it's very rewarding. These are challenges that the industry has faced for years.
I can tell you definitely, I've called, and my husband had a stroke, and it was just absolutely amazing, and I thank you guys.
Thank you.
Well, dispatching is definitely the literally unsung heroes of public safety. You know, like you said, the project managers, but nobody sees them. I mean, police are your most visible. So, yeah, it is a challenge. As far as the stress, I mean, as far as putting money and pay, I mean, those are all incentives, but, you know, other, you know, other, what are some of the things you come up with to combat the stress? How to make this job, how do you recruit people and tell them what to expect? I mean, here's how much money you're going to make. So it's, you know, just, can you just kind of touch on that? What kind of steps or are there any initiatives that, you know, that we're taking here to combat that?
Yeah, one of the things we've been researching with our staff is to get a peer support committee. That would be incredibly helpful on a local level, also on a state level. Like Debbie said, I'll be at the conference next weekend, or next week. That's for the whole state of Indiana. There'll be people there from every piece app in Indiana. That's going to give us a lot of networking. There's a lot of organizations that are out there that people can turn to, to help combat the stress. But the most important thing is, you have to be self-aware of how much stress this job is causing you and how it's affecting your life. That's what my presentation is based on, that it takes self-awareness. It's very easy to become very negative in this job and very cynical, and that spreads through your department rapidly. And it's getting people to see what the source of that is and turn that around. It's not easy. It's not easy at all.
What is the age of, say, like, somebody? Could you possibly go into high schools or something and talk about?
That's interesting that you bring that up.
Colleges and talk about?
Yes, absolutely. We've actually had, there's a, Robert Schulte with Alpares Fire, we work closely with him. He's broadened some of his vocational classes and done tours. I have spoken at the MAC at some of these courses. There's actually a course offered through Ivy Tech that I've reached out to that instructor, and we're trying to, that's where we're trying to bring people in and give them kind of an overview of what we do. A lot of times, I know that when I started my career with the 911 center, I had no idea. I had no idea. It was just a job. I was looking for a job, I was young. And once you're really in the chair, you realize, we deal with daily, what did we count up? 23 different software applications? And that's more than anyone who's familiar with people who work in IT, oftentimes, they don't even have 23 different software applications that they're faced with every day.
That's each dispatcher. So I don't know each dispatcher's desk, they're running 23 different software programs.
Responsible for 23. We have, if you've visited our center, we really are just the technological hub of the county. We have, you know, six screens at each console, and then screens monitors throughout the center. So it's, as technology, as you can imagine, technology, they say, is outdated in a two-year period. So if we're keeping up, and we are, with the latest technology to serve the community, that's just more, another added responsibility for the dispatchers. So that contributes to the stress in addition to just, you know, the calls they take every day.
And that's another quality of a successful dispatcher, you need to be tech savvy. You know, our technology has to keep up with the advancing technology, and you've got to be able to, you know, you have to be really tech savvy. You can text 911, that's been around for a couple of years now. The next generation from that is video, and it's coming. So, you know, that presents a whole nother side of the job, where you're always talking to people through the phone, and down the line, you're going to be seeing these things in real time.
Are there specific requirements, age or particular education or?
Actually, it used to be 21. We've now dropped it to 19. We actually have, one of our most successful dispatchers has been with the county now for a little over two years, and she was very young. So we're finding that sometimes the younger dispatchers are those tech savvy. They're the sponges, they're agile mentally and otherwise. As far as skills go, we go through a very extensive hiring process. There's a testing called Critical. We send that out, and it basically gauges some of the different aspects needed to dispatch successfully. But one of the things I've found from my experience is, you really can't gauge critical thinking. Critical thinking, it comes in this wide array of packages. And I have found, I think Paige would agree, that it's difficult to really pinpoint if somebody has those skills. Without critical thinking, you won't do well in this career. And that's another reason that you can do well on paper, you can test well, you can interview well, but if you don't possess critical thinking, usually during the training process, that's why we have over 40% success rate.
The fire department, some of the fire departments have lowered the age required, and I think it's 18 in some departments. And so that's why I asked that question. If that's, if 19, it sounds like a good opportunity, maybe even 18 might work as well, depending on the person and their adaptability for the role.
Yeah, we're really not boxed in. I mean, we're definitely, we're trying to think outside the box and figure out...
So there's no restrictions that are necessarily holding you back?
Yeah. Yeah, we've actually changed the, you were probably part of it, but it's been several years ago before I was in the chair. We did drop that age and change the job description to reflect it.
Let me ask, do you have any progress with your HVAC?
We have not. The HVAC for the dispatch side, Train came in and made some modifications, and we have seen a decrease in the humidity, but we are still seeing very fluctuating humidity levels. We're having our dispatchers at this time log them, and they've gone up anywhere in the 90 percentile to lower levels. But it's directly relative to humidity outside, and it's an ongoing issue.
Yesterday morning, for example, I came in at 6:00 AM, and the humidity in the server room was over 85%. That's the server room, the brains of our whole department.
So you're communicating with the commissioners to get that rectified?
I have been. I've also made facilities, the new facilities director, I just emailed him yesterday to ask where he was with progress, and he said that he'd actually reached out to get everybody back at the table, I believe is the terminology he used with me. Just to give you a picture, to expound on what Paige has mentioned, you can go into the dispatch room when the humidity is very high, the server room rather, and there's a layer of condensation on those enclosures. And if, I'm sure we've all been in server rooms, and that's electrical equipment that's thousands, millions of dollars that can't have water anywhere near it, and so it's a real thing.
We invest a lot of money in that 911 center. It's, you know, it'd be nice to be able to complete that and not leave it unfinished. So hopefully, we can get that rectified.
Thank you. It is a beautiful center. Okay. Very nice center.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
You ready to vote?
Yes!
All in favor?
We did it!
All in favor of the transfer of $50,000 salaries overtime, signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Same sign. Thank you. Thank you for the conversation and the update. Highway. Motor vehicle fund, transfer $25,000 from hourly to overtime. Reason, transfer needed in anticipation of winter snow plowing. So I just looked at the weather, and I think we're good for a little bit.
Hopefully not yet. Pardon? Hopefully not yet.
So there's a request in front of you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. I guess, kind of, you know, discussing before the meeting is, why right now in September? I mean, I get it in anticipation you're coming, but...
Well, I think we're down to about 8,000 right now in overtime, and one weekend snowstorm cost about 20,000. It snows the first week of December, which you can easily do when it happens on a weekend.
You just didn't want to say this in October?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have a few, I mean, a couple meetings anyway, prior to December.
It did snow on Halloween last year.
What?
Really? Yeah, I interfered with my Christmas lights from the month.
It's not out of the question to get an ice storm in October, November.
We will always pay our bills.
All right, there's a motion in a second in front of you for a transfer of $25,000 from hourly to overtime in anticipation of snow.
Hopefully, we don't use it.
Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. I like the shirt.
Porter County Sheriff, federal DOC in jail. All right, let me get my breath as I get ready to roll through this. Ready? All right, general fund, there's an additional $20,000 to overtime, some more overtime. Reason to cover short shifts for patrol officers while six new officers remain in the academy. There's a transfer, $2,000 from printing other than office supplies to uniform and clothing. $6,500 from equipment other than vehicles to uniform and clothing. The reason transfer needed for molly vest patrol officers is another transfer, $12,000 from salaries to overtime. Reason transfer needed to cover short shifts for patrol officers while six new officers remain in the academy. Sheriff firearms training fund, additional $4,000 to other equipment. Reason to purchase and update rifles for new patrol officers. Sheriff DEA forfeiture proceeds fund, additional $65,000 to motor vehicles. Reason appropriation needed to purchase Bearcat vehicle for SWAT. So there's three additionals, two transfers. There's a motion to approve all?
Second.
Second? Discussion? We'll get a roll call on the three additionals and the two transfers.
Councilmember Brechner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick?
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Is that good? Do I got more federal DOC? Jeez. So I guess you guys got a whole page. So I was thinking in my mind though, is the overtime. Have you guys just seen the last three departments are requesting overtime? So, you know, again, the trend of finding employees as employees move around, training, you know, we're hearing training, so as we go through budget session, maybe we need to just keep in mind, looking at those overtime line items, you know, maybe versus open salaries positions or, you know, but obviously, overtime's in front of us here, you know. So, and here we go. The sheriff, federal DOC general fund, reduction of $20,000 to overtime. Reason reduction will be used in sheriff's general fund to help cover the costs of overtime patrol officers. Transfer of $27,000 from other equipment to uniform and clothing. Reason transfer needed for molly vests for uniform change. I'll just keep going. Jail, jail general fund, there's a Form 144, $43,017 to zero. It's like changing first-class officer, first-class jailer, and zero to $48,734. That's seven to eight at $48,734. Reason, added one sergeant in the jail and one less first-class jailer. Amount of cost is $5,717 more. No additional funds needed for 2022, and change was reflected in the 2023 budget requests.
I'll make a motion on all three actions.
There's a motion in a second on the reduction, the transfer in the Form 144. Just maybe get into the jail, what you're doing there exactly.
Well, I have an officer that's basically been on, not disability, but he hasn't been able to work for about six, eight months. He's been, but he's been able to work in a jail. So he's going to retire, and he gave up his rank to go into jail with the understanding that we would make him a sergeant in the jail. He's an experienced policeman, experienced jailer before he was a policeman, so it's a good thing for us on the road, and we've already got a guy that, you know, we want to replace him. But, you know, it's good for both, and obviously good for the jail. So getting an experienced guy in the jail.
All right. Further discussion? And we'll see that in the budget, 2023 budget. Can we get a roll call on the reduction, the transfer in the Form 144?
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brechner?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Take care. EMA, general fund, there's a transfer, $945. Dues and subscription, laundry and cleaning. Reason transfer needed to pay molly maids through the end of 2022. There's a District One Task Force Fund, there's a transfer, $1,000 from gas, fuel, and lubrication to other supplies. $5,000 from vehicle repairs and maintenance to equipment other than vehicles. Reason transfer needed to pay anticipated need for remainder of the year. Couple transfers in front of you.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor, discussion.
Lance, I think we asked, it might have been a couple months ago, about using...
about using molly maids. Still not getting anybody from the county.
No.
I think Commissioner Biggs was here and said he was gonna look into it. Did you get a response?
I have heard nothing since then.
So you have to pay an outside vendor to clean your building still?
Yeah, we're just taking it out of our present budgets, and that's why we're transferring from one category to another to try to pay it out of what we have.
Okay.
Are you having an ongoing discussion with the commissioners about, about this that you are?
I've had several...
Actively recruit, recruiting the money for this?
I've had several discussions with them and then the previous facilities director, and it's gone nowhere. So that's why...
But since our meeting, since that, when Commissioner Biggs made that comment?
I've heard nothing since then.
Can you follow up, please?
What's that?
With Commissioner Biggs, can you follow up?
I will.
He said that in the meeting. So, I mean, if you haven't talked to him since...
I understand what you're saying, but there's nothing.
Well, I get it from their end, but now from your end. Go bug him. Be a little bee in his ear.
Now, uh, so Facilities takes care of most of the cleaning and county buildings. Am I right on that? Anybody know?
That's what I thought they said last meeting, that, when we discussed it.
I, I don't know what the situation is today, but with juvenile detention, they have, they requested help to clean, and they clean, they do their own cleaning. Now, they, that might have changed. I don't know. Vicky, do you guys know?
I don't.
But, um...
I believe Highway has molly maids too, and they have for years.
Well, the idea that, I think there's some departments out there, at budget time, we need to look in to see...
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm going with it, is to ask the question.
Yeah.
What, what, does it cost? What should it cost? I would like to think if we have Facilities Department that does cleaning, that they could take care of other existing county buildings. And my guess is, uh, or I'm confident that they could, or should be able to do it better and less expensive. So hopefully that's something we can further explore at the commissioner's level. Anytime I've asked, they said they don't have enough people to do it. From what I've seen, this is my opinion, and for the price we're paying, I feel it's cheaper to pay molly maid. You're not paying for benefits, and they're bringing their own cleaning supplies, vacuum cleaners, so we don't have to buy any of that. They show up, they come up, come with two to four people, they're in and out. They do a good job, don't have to check up on them, and it's done. So that's just my opinion. And, and that's another way to look at it. And if that's the case, then molly maids or whoever could or should be everywhere. But there's gotta be a best practice, and we oughta find out what it is. And then my guess is that it ought to be consistent throughout the county. I agree.
That's why we have a Facilities Department.
Need a motion, or we already make a motion?
Uh, I think, we had it.
All right, it's all...
We had it, yeah.
So, further discussion? All right, all in favor of the two transfers, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So we'll, we'll try to take a little look into it, you know, maybe try to reach out to the commissioners. Again, maybe if one's not answering you, maybe try to reach out to another one.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Lance.
Health Department. Hello?
Hello.
So there's an additional of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to motor vehicles to purchase a mobile unit. An additional fifty thousand dollars of salary. Thirty-nine hundred to FICA, six thousand dollars to PERF. Reasons supplemental pay for Health Department staff for COVID-19 pandemic. There's a Form 144, zero to fifty thousand dollars supplemental pay. Three thousand at seven equals twenty-one thousand dollars. Nurses and Dr. Sam, three thousand times five, it's fifteen thousand. It's a COVID, um, point of, what, point of dispense? Three managers and, and Health Department managers, two thousand dollars at four. Eight thousand dollars, foods, environmental, and new nurses, and one thousand dollars at six. Six thousand dollars clerical and vital records, total amount, fifty thousand dollars supplemental pay for Health Department staff for COVID-19 pandemic. So there's a couple additionals in front of you, one for a vehicle, and it looks like one for, um, taxes or bonuses.
I'd like to make a motion to accept or to approve the 225 to purchase the new mobile unit.
There's a motion on the floor for the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase a mobile unit.
Second.
There's a second. Discussion? No discussion. Can we get a roll call on the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the mobile unit?
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, so you have another additional in, in front of you that's requesting, um, it's like three thousand, three thousand, two thousand, one thousand dollar bonuses or stipends or supplemental pay in front of you. Where, can you maybe say to spur a conversation a little bit, where did this money come from? Is this new money? Was this...
So this is money brought in directly from our pods for administrating, administering the COVID vaccines.
Recently brought in? Was this in a...
Maybe I can explain this a little bit better. So when the COVID vaccine was provided by the feds for us to administer, it was distributed free, right, paid for by the federal government. The administration of the COVID vaccine, so that's the drawing, the storing of the vaccine, drawing it up, actually giving it into people's arms. There was a method to actually bill insurance for that. Now, when someone received a vaccine, that got put into the computer system that went to the State Department of Health. The State Department of Health took care of all that billing. They received, so from private sector and public sector, I believe, they received reimbursements for the administration of the vaccine. That, we were able to receive a portion of. So we didn't even receive all of the administration fee. And it varied between sixteen and twenty dollars per vaccine, depending on which one it was, whether it was your first, your second, your booster, et cetera. So that's where these funds came from, that we are looking to use a small amount of, a portion of it, to provide some supplemental pay for those Health Department employees who were with us through COVID, continue to be with us, and had their, had their work, um, uh, their work hours, their work days, their work duties completely disrupted during the course of COVID. And, and they were very, they were instrumental in us being able to provide hundreds of thousands of vaccines to not just Porter County residents, but anybody who came into our county to receive vaccines. So, so we really were hoping to provide them with a little bit of supplemental pay to make good on their really hard work that they did for us in a very stressful time.
Now, was this statewide? Did this occur in all, all counties?
The, uh, the administration fee reimbursed, yes, they provided this for all counties, yes.
So all counties, all health departments got...
Whatever they, whatever they gave for vaccines, they received, and were, and the state was able to bill for, they received the administration fee for.
Do you have any idea how other county health departments utilize their, the fees that they reach to return?
Sure, right. So we had reached out to Dr. Christina Box, our Indiana Department of Health State Commissioner, and she provided us with some information that these funds could be used for supplemental pay. And she did provide us with the example. The only one I can think of off the top of my head is Floyd County has used it as such also.
Do you know Floyd County, if they got a raise, like you guys, we gave those stipends, the premium pay. In those counties, do they get a premium pay plus this, like you're proposing?
I don't know what all happened in those counties. I just know that Floyd County did, and I believe Gary also did that. But I don't know specifically how they broke everything down.
So is this, they were getting paid while they were there, right? So this is like a bonus?
So, um...
Is this what this is, a bonus?
Most of the employees that were working during this time were receiving their pay, but they are ineligible for overtime, right? So our nurses...
Lex or...
Well, um, so it, we're ineligible, I'm sorry, we're, that's my lack of county knowledge. They're ineligible for overtime because they receive salary. So, yes, they were being, okay. Vicky can help.
It's not because they receive a salary, it's because under the Fair Labor Standards Act, they're professionals and they're exempt from the fair labor...
Exempt, that's the word I was looking for. Thank you.
My question is, can this money be used for something else? As I discussed with you, my concern is giving any increases as a stipend, even though you guys deserve it, you guys did some awesome things. But everybody needs more money now, everybody counting wide. You heard the pay study. I mean, this is also something that's attacking us. So for us to already have given out bonuses at the beginning of this year for COVID and the things that we tackled, and to do it again in the middle of the year, I think we should look at alternative options. Like I had mentioned, maybe some kind of scholarship to all your nurses that's available to them. It's giving them the money, but just in a different way that helps the county as well. It's my personal opinion. So my question is, does it have to be supplemental pay, or does it, could be anything? Or is it up to you guys because you're a board?
You've had more discussions with the staff, I think, along those lines.
So I definitely believe in adding value to our employees. And so already, we've started doing things where we're using these funds to go send them to trainings and to get them certifications, to get them memberships with national organizations so that they're more in the loop, they're more educated, and adding value to them overall. That's already something we are doing and we do plan to continue doing. And then purchasing other items such as AEDs for the entire county is another thing that we are using this money for. We already purchased those. And so for all county buildings, we purchased AEDs. The ones that had been purchased before were either needing updated, and so we're helping with that too. And then, let me see, what else have I got on my list of things we're gonna do? Oh, and then the mobile clinic, of course, you know, is something that we're, I'm personally very passionate about is outreach. I think we have found that we need to get out where the people are. We need to meet them out where they're at and provide those services and hopefully help the underserved. And so that's why the mobile clinic, and we're wanting to use some of our money for that too. So those are all definitely things that we are thinking about. And of course, Vicky, I met with her a while back, and that idea of keeping that cushion there is always in my mind too. So that's what some of this is gonna go towards, is making sure that we're maintaining that so we don't get back into that picture that you saw before where we dropped way down.
How much money did we receive?
So from this specifically, I'm not including any other federal funds or grant funds, but from this specifically, it was just over a million dollars. So far, we have spent on those items that I discussed, we are down with the mobile unit to about seven hundred thousand dollars still in that fund from this.
Now, is this a one-time thing, or will this, will this continue? Every injection you give?
I believe we're still receiving administration reimbursements for COVID vaccines. So, but of course, not in the large numbers that we saw it for 2021, right?
I would just like to say, being with my past experience, COVID was a very, it was a very challenging and frightening period for all of us. And for those that had to go out and deal every day, even though you had all of the isolation equipment and you're taught what you, you know, how to prevent disease being transferred, it's still a very stressful thing to be doing. That's part of the nursing challenge. And I can see where these people, you know, could be rewarded. Also, if we had other departments, and may I just use an example, if the sheriff's department, if the federal or state decided that they would somehow get some money and give it to the sheriff's departments all over the state of Indiana to do with, as, you know, they would, I'm certain that we would be, they would be asking for a similar type of reimbursement. So I can see where this is coming from. And I, I can also appreciate that our money was given out. But I can also, you know, appreciate where you're coming from too.
Thank you. It really was a very stressful, stressful time. We lost seven staff during that course of that year due to workplace stress, really. So to encourage that, you know, just the workplace...
I mean, we appreciate what they did, yeah. And I guess I just want a couple questions. We gave a stipend to the Health Department workers, was it twenty, how much did we give each, do you remember?
Premium pay. Four thousand premium pay.
Four thousand? So we gave the stipend, they were getting paid. And now with this, how much would each, how much overtime did each employee accumulate? And what, that were, that were, that were working during this time? And how much now are they going to be getting with this additional that you're asking for per exempt employee?
So they didn't actually accumulate much overtime during that time. What they were doing is they were working on a lot of...
I thought you said they were exempt from...
So like, what she's talking about, I think, is not so much with our, with the vaccines were given. When they were working, the extra hours was for going out and doing, for lack of a better term, what I call mass policing. We were going into weddings, to people's private events, and monitoring those to make sure that they were following COVID safety protocols. We were taking phone calls. I remember specifically one evening, I happened to be with a nurse, and we spoke to a restaurant owner for two hours on the phone while he's pleading with us to allow his employees to continue to work even though we knew that they had COVID. So it's those kinds of things that they weren't reimbursed, those extra things like on the phone, talking to people. We honestly aren't allowed to work much over that thirty-five hours per week. We're held to that. But so there was just things that they were doing that we didn't track, I'll be honest. We didn't track the extra hours people were spending on the phone, the extra hours. I know some people in this room probably called our, our COVID nurse and called our Director of Nursing After Hours and spoke with them. And we just did what was expected of us, because people were afraid and people were scared, and we were trying our best to provide answers.
So we could talk about driving to hospitals and nursing homes to deliver PPE.
We could, or to doctors' offices. We could talk about opening testing sites, going out and speaking to people about where we can have a test site, um, recruiting volunteers, training volunteers, scheduling volunteers, supervising volunteers, test sites and vaccine sites. It was, it was a lot of chaos. There was a lot going on. There were a lot of balls in the air at once.
So how much are you looking to give each of these individuals?
So we looked at basing it on kind of their level of work and involvement with, with COVID directly. So for example, this top one of three thousand dollars, that would go towards the nurses who were involved directly with the efforts, and then also any of the people who were kind of managers, the pod managers of it. And that is the three thousand dollars each. And then the next here are the staff who went out and did that mass policing, went to weddings, went out to businesses and ensured that they were following COVID safety protocols. And that's two thousand dollars each. And then the next is more towards our clerical and vital records, who are basically holding down the fort in the office while everybody else was out. And they were the ones taking a lot of those phone calls. And the phone calls we received were heartbreaking, I'll be honest. They were heartbreaking, or we were being harassed. And so none of that was easy on anybody. And we just want to be able to show our staff, we see how hard you work. And I know everybody had a difficult time during COVID. It's not easy on anybody. But that's really just the goal here.
I'm just wondering how the volunteers would feel that they put in their time to help out, and then the people that they're helping out are getting rewarded with some extra money above and beyond. I'm just curious about that.
I couldn't speak to how they feel. I do know there were some volunteers we tried to bring on payroll, and they didn't want to do it. They didn't want to be on payroll. They said, no, we're doing this because we feel passionate about what we're doing right now. But that is why, you were heavily involved in the recognition dinner, and that meant so much to the staff. And we still have pictures circulating of how, what a great time that was and how it felt to them to be recognized during that time.
Well, I think that we have a lot of county employees that picked up the slack during COVID.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we did give stipends, COVID money to our county employees. And we did give stipends, COVID money to our county employees for that. And I guess, and I know you're trying to, you're fighting for your people. That's great. But at the same time, you know, we, you know, there are some parity issues as well too with other departments and, you know, who worked harder, who worked more hours, what did they do? And I think those are some things at least, you know, that I would take into consideration.
Absolutely.
So you said that a couple of counties did it. I mean, what are all the other counties doing with this money?
I have no idea. So we operate a little differently than some counties. So a lot of counties, everything they bring in goes to their general fund. So then at that point, it is up to their county council or commissioners to determine what that money's being spent on. And they, they had no say. I know I've, I've watched a few county council meetings or other counties where people were very upset because that money was then being spent on things having nothing to do with the health department. So we're a little different here.
We could spend it on other things.
Yeah, ours.
Let's move it, let's move it and fix a bunch of problems.
So we do operate a little bit differently within our county and all of our funds don't go back to the general fund. So I couldn't speak to how they all did it.
So how much have you set aside in case our health needs management? Would you be willing to put towards shore up your health fund?
The, like, the health department fund, not the health insurance. Which fund are you talking about?
They contribute to the health insurance fund.
Okay, you're right.
And Madam Auditor, and if you do know, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm curious about, we're talking about a million dollars that came to the health department for the vaccine distribution, I guess is what we'd call it. And has that money been received? And in what fund is it? And are there, I would assume with anything that just comes falling free from the government, there's strings attached where there's restrictions on what you can or can't spend it on. So can you clarify for me?
Actually, this was a topic at a meeting earlier today that I was at with the AIC and other auditors were talking about this. Okay, they have several specific grant funds that they get funding from, federal money that's funded through the state. This particular money that they're talking about is going, it's right into their health department fund. This is their main general fund, if you will, for the health department. And I just wanted to clarify that. So this is part of what I talked about, that reimbursement in their health fund. This is a property tax supported fund that happens to be getting a lot of federal reimbursement right now, along with the other grant funds that they have. There's a lot of federal money coming in.
Yeah, so for the specific million dollars, is that earmarked specifically for this particular program?
No, it's receipted in as revenue into this fund. Now, how they want to internally manage that is up to them. But from our standpoint, we're looking at it as miscellaneous revenues coming into the fund. When we look at the property tax levy allocation, that's what we're looking at. And that's the graph that I showed you, how their operating balance is just sort because of all the federal money coming into this fund. And to speak to the comment about the other counties have deposited some of this money in the general fund. I can't speak to all of the other counties, but I can tell you that in, yeah, 2020, perhaps 2021, there was CARES Act reimbursement that we could have used for personnel reimbursement in public safety and public health. Now, public safety is in the general fund. And we in the auditor's office made sure that we reimbursed the health department fund and designated that money for public health because that's the time when their health department fund was, you know, on life support, basically. We were worried about the fund. And so we made sure to designate that, to reimburse the personnel costs for the health department. That's probably what you're referring to, that some other counties chose to take that money and put it all into public safety, which is in general fund.
Okay.
So, now, there might be other reimbursements that I'm not aware of, but that was something that we purposely did in Porter County. And we held on to that, we held on to it in the federal fund that we established, the grant fund before we moved it over to your health fund, because I wanted to watch how well the health department fund was doing. And then it just, the federal money just has been coming in, to the point that you saw that balance now.
So you look at it like it's continuing to grow?
We don't know how long this reimbursement's going to be coming to us.
Well, this is a tough one for me too. I mean, because it's all of our county employees, our officers, you know, there was jail. This money's coming in, it's, you know, giving another three, 3,000, 2,000. I mean, you know, and we're going to struggle our way through budget sessions to make sure that we can give raises to our employees. To me, the health fund is just getting healthy. And don't, like, you're fighting for your employees, I get it, 100%, but, you know, is it fair to any of the other departments, you know, coming in front of us? Well, we've got this fund, let's hand out, you know, additional stipends, bonuses during the year. So I just struggle with this one right now. I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision, but.
Is, is there any motion on it?
There is not.
Vicki, how much is in that health fund today?
Right now, the balance is 2,157,653.
And are you, are you saying that, so we're saying this roughly, there's a million dollars that came based on this program, that mobile unit's part of, part of it? So we're down to 750, and then if the 50 for the employees, there's still 700.
Yes.
That remains. And what could you imagine you'd do with that? I mean, what's, is there, have there been thoughts or?
Yes, there have been, of course. But as in, I'll be honest, as a new administrator, I want to kind of just lay low for a minute. I want to figure out what the best ways are to spend that money to maintain us long-term. I don't want to be back where we were in 2011. So the biggest thing I want to do, like I said, is add value to our staff, no matter how that is. And so for me, that's through educations and trainings and making sure that they are well-prepared to do their jobs. And then hopefully, I don't know, anything we can do to retain, you know, like she said, we lost seven people during that time. So right now, that's kind of where we are. I know I've been working with some other groups about what we can provide to other government agencies, whether it be the schools, how we can help them out, whether it be the county building as a whole, what we can do there. And so I'm open for suggestions, of course, but really, for me personally, as a new administrator, I'd like to kind of just lay low, like I said, for a minute, and evaluate things and determine where we can best spend that money. I'm not a big spender, to be honest, so I can't imagine us going on a spending spree at all.
Well, anybody getting more questions? Not get any.
Really, thank you for all that you did during.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So let's say with a lack of emotion, that request, let's, let's say with a lack of motion, that request at this time, you know, doesn't move forward, so.
Thanks for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And, yeah, I mean, maybe the thing is to find out maybe what other counties are doing with that money, you know, how they're expanding, you know, maybe services and, you know, going out there. Maybe, you know, giving us a little more information on what other counties know.
I sit on some committees and I ask questions of people and everybody's so busy. I mean, honestly, they're just so stressed out and busy and I didn't get much response.
I have just one more thing.
Yeah.
Did you, what is your staff up to now? Were you able to hire and replace those seven that left?
Yes, we have been able to get back up, but we recently lost two more as of this month. So we're back down a little bit, and so we're going to be having, we have hired somebody while we're interviewing people now. So it is still an ongoing problem, as you know, nurses in the county don't, don't make as much as they can in the, in the private sector.
And is most of your staff still bachelor degrees?
Oh, of course, yeah.
That's, that's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the Floyd County example, from my quick read of it, it appeared as if that was just part of their ARPA distribution. So what I'd like to do is lean on our affiliation with the Association of Indiana Counties, Ms. Urbannick, to find out, you know, all counties are receiving this specific money. And it would be interesting to find out what they're using that money for, in whatever way that is. I think it, it would certainly be good information.
Yeah, I've heard lots of them are buying mobile units also.
Do you?
Yeah, it's a big one.
So let's continue the conversation.
Thank you.
All right, Board of Elections and Registration. It's like Clerk Perpetuation Fund, there's a transfer. Oh, boy. $15,000 from hourly to software rental fees, $1,000 from office supplies to software rental fees, $500 from other supplies, software rental fees, $750 from training and education to software rental fees, $500 from contractual services, software rental fees, $500 from other office equipment, over $100 to software rental fees, $1,000 from furniture fixtures over $100 to software rental fees, $750 from data processing equipment to software rental fees, $500 from travel to, you got it, software rental fees. The reason, transfer needed for payment of new phone application for offices. We're looking to have our very own app created for Apple and Android phones.
Make the motion on the transfer?
Second.
There's a motion in a second on all the transfers. Discussion.
I have, have a question.
Yes.
Is there, is there any concern, how is this going to work with interdepartmental, anybody? It seemed like a few years ago, Vicki, you might have, we wanted to make certain at county government that whatever each department chose to use as a software, that it, for whatever reason, that other departments, of course, I guess that doesn't make much sense, but I just wanted to make certain that this.
So I think, Sylvia, I think your question is, like IT, IT in general, as we got on those discussions years ago about different departments having, you know, maybe their own websites and stuff.
That's exactly right.
I think that's what you're discussing. So this is, it looks like, and I, you know, talked to the clerk and I downloaded it. I believe that's what we're doing here, right? This whole, you know, it was the Sullivan County Clerk's Office, there's an app, you know, and there's a lot of, you know, things on this app that can be done. I mean, maybe you want to explain what, what I can do on this app?
Yeah, yeah, we have, it'll work actually between the elections office and the clerk's office, between election and registration and the clerk. So if you're focusing more, if you're interested in more of the elections part of the application, you could register to vote through it. You can get push notifications to know when the last day to register to vote would be. You could get where sample ballots would be available. You can look at who the elected officials are within, which we can do through the county anyway. On election day, you could look at vote times at the vote centers. So say you're coming in from North County, you live in South County, you want to see what the closest polling location to you is, what the wait times are if it's a little bit longer, you can stop at one of the other locations. You can look at the early voting hour locations, the wait times there. As far as the clerk's portion of the app, marriage licenses now, you have to apply before you come into the clerk's office. So you can actually do the link through that. You can look at your court case through a link through that. You could pay your court costs through the app. You have all of these links available, your court dates can be looked at, you can request records, you can. And Clerk Billy has reached out to other departments within the courts too as well to see if they would be interested in kind of having a push notification for probation fees for the jurors, that kind of thing as well, so.
Sounds pretty cool.
It does. Now, my only other question, you have all this money you're transferring out of the county. I just wondered, I hope we're not going to see any increases in Dikster's budget in any.
Not that, yeah.
How do they get the information for voting lines, like wait times? Does the inspector then, how does that work?
Yeah, kind of, it's, I think the elections office is working with GIS somehow doing that. Because we can actually do that now.
Wow, that's pretty cool. Kind of like the, when you go to the, like, you see those billboards with the hospital wait time? Same idea?
Yep, same idea, same concept.
It's pretty cool.
So is that, is that all, has that all been vetted through IT? And are we working with them to see if they're in support or?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Because they wouldn't be maintaining it, the clerk would.
And this is going to come out of this perpetuation fund, everything?
Yes. Yep.
Any kind of annual maintenance, upgrades, everything?
This, yes.
Well, moving forward too?
Yes.
Is this perpetuation fund, it's got a little bit of cash in it?
Yeah, I don't know what the balance is, but I'm sure Jessica does.
Let me ask you this. Have we had any discussions with the sheriff's department? Because I know the sheriff's department has a similar app, I think.
Yes.
And have we talked to them about?
Jessica has reached out to them, but what the conversation was between the two, I don't know.
Because they could, they've been doing it for years and they could tell you the good, bad, and the work or effort that's involved with it, or the additional costs that might become part of it that we're not thinking about today, and might be worth having that discussion too.
All right, I think there's a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the transfers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Go build an app.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much. When can I download it?
Yeah.
He's watching Sullivan County.
Yeah, I get alerts from Sullivan County. I don't know if that helps me or not. All right, Surveyor, Surveyor Perpetuation Fund, an additional $27,000 to other equipment. Reason, appropriation needed to purchase new updated Trimble R121 along with the Trimble TSC 5 Controller Data Collector Package with Bracket, yeah.
Motion to approve.
With Bracket.
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor for some equipment. Discussion? We're going to roll call Madam Auditor on additional.
Hense Member Sims?
Yes.
Hense Member Wagner?
Yes.
Hense Member Rivas?
Yes.
Hense Member Bozick?
Yes.
Hense Member Brickner?
Yes.
Hense Member Graham?
Yes.
Hense Member Jessen?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you.
IT, transfer $40,000 from data processing equipment to maintenance agreement. Can wait till the end of the meeting. Reason, transfer of funds needed for antivirus licenses. You going to download that app when we get it?
I'm going to, it looks good. So, yeah, this is the antivirus licensing we pay every year for all of the computers, all of the servers for the county.
Why isn't it budgeted normally?
It is normally handled through a company that handles all of that stuff for us. This company I'm severing our relationship with because they're just not doing an adequate job. And because they've done it for so many years, I only got like two weeks' notice that this was going to happen.
So are you buying out the contract we've been in? Is that what you're saying?
It's just year to year, but we're just canceling the renewal and going to another company whose quote was $2,000 less as well.
Further discussion, was there a motion? I don't think there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, further discussion? See and none, all in favor of the $40,000 transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lee.
Do it, Nick.
Thank you. So next is the ARPA COVID Fiscal Recovery Fund. In front of you, nobody's here to present, but, you know, we've had some discussion about this, you know, last month. Well, I mean, we've been discussing this for a while, but, you know, through some conversations, you know, with what's going on with some of the stormwater stuff, you know, I thought, well, you know, let's, let's go ahead and put it on the agenda and see what happens with it. So, and that, it's my understanding, and maybe Chelsea, is she still here? You know, in that infrastructure and facilities, that $7 million, I believe that Carriage Hills would be one of those projects if approved, correct? And that's turning into a larger, you know, project, right? I mean, it's a complete rebuild of their stormwater system over there, it sounds like. Yes, please, please, yeah, thank you.
She must work for us, I assume.
It's an engineer.
Oh, nice.
So hi, my name is Chelsea Gordon, I'm a stormwater engineer in the department.
I'm a stormwater engineer in the Department of Development and Stormwater Management here at the county. To answer your question, yes, Carriage Hills would be a part of the Infrastructure Committee that was proposed, and that would be a complete reconstruction of the storm sewer. It would also include a completely reconstruction of the entire roadway within Carriage Hills, which is about half a mile long. So that's what that project would include.
So a comment, or I don't know if it was a comment or a question made to separate it out, I mean, does that do anything? Is there anything we could do to expedite this? I mean, by approving, if we approve this infrastructure money tonight, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, we're approving the money, the money's available, there's nothing on our end that we could do to expedite it, right? I mean...
So the only thing that you could do to expedite it is if you approve the money tonight, then we can move forward with finalizing the design for construction next spring or summer. And the reason why it couldn't happen this year is because asphalt plants close around Thanksgiving. So we don't want to rip open the road, install the storm sewer, and then leave gravel for the entire winter. So the quickest expedition of the project would be if you approve the funds tonight for construction next spring or summer.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the entire ARPA as presented.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve all the ARPA funds. So we get into discussion. So I just, I guess to clarify too on something is that, you know, it sounds like an ongoing problem in Carriage Hills, it's nothing new. But, you know, and I've talked to, you know, a resident, you know, I was in the building talking to Mike and trying to figure out a little bit more about it, but I just want to remind, you know, folks, you know, with elections right in front of us and the politics out there was, this infrastructure and facilities money was on the original ARPA plan in the wintertime. That was basically thrown out. Not everything was thrown out, though. Employees' premium pay was kept on it, money for the trustees was on it, and I believe the client had trail. And there was discussion, I believe, about keeping the infrastructure on it, but the commissioner demanded it be taken off, along with everything else. So here we back are again, you know, with that money, you know, in there. But just for a point of clarification, that money was there in the wintertime, and it was requested by a commissioner to be taken out. So, and then the process was created and here we are, so. But I, you know, I think the discussion is important, you know, that it's on there, the motions made, seconded to approve it all. You know, I think tonight you've heard, you know, I mean, as we're going into budget session, we've, we've got our employees, you know, in front of us, we've got to figure that out. We've got facilities, other facilities that we've got to figure out, whether it is MOH, whether it is Center Garage, you know, the jail, stormwater stuff. So to me, it's, I think the infrastructure facilities makes a lot of sense to me right now. You know, these are county, this is county stuff that we're funding. We're funding infrastructure in the county. Stormwater is a big thing that we've got to continue to tackle. And we've come a long way in passing a fee and building a department and getting out there and tackling this. But I don't think anybody really realized how big the problem was, you know, as we got going on it. So it's something that we're going to have to continue to address, make sure that department is properly staffed and, you know, the funding is there. And I think the county COVID response stuff, if you look at it, to me, you know, I definitely will vote on some things tonight, but, you know, in light of everything going on, I just, I still find it hard to hand out money at this point in time to nonprofits and other organizations until we make sure we're taking care of our infrastructure. We make sure, certain we're taking care of our facilities. We make certain that we're taking care of our employees. So, you know, it's, to me, that's important that we cross that bridge, and that's why I said I think the timing of, you know, ARPA and this discussion is perfect. We just had first reading tonight. So putting it back on the agenda, you know, on the agenda makes a lot of sense. But I think, you know, it's going to continue in the conversation, but, you know, until we get to, you know, in my opinion anyways, you know, a full understanding of where the county's going, I find it hard to pass everything, you know? Our health, for our employees, our healthcare, probably needs a couple million dollars in that too. And, you know, there was, there was a commissioner who all of a sudden states that we've got all these, you know, funding issues and problems, you know, whether it's ambulance service, that actually we started trying to go down that path last year. Andy, you helped me out on that. And we asked the commissioner to get involved, and he said no. You know, the wage study, it's in front of us. You know, I just don't know, until we understand what we're giving our employees, how we hand out eight to 10 million dollars to other organizations, until we exactly know what we're doing with our employees. You know, how do we hand out eight to 10 million dollars and tell our employees they can have a raise? You know, but that same, you know, commissioner that has used that, you know, in an editorial also voted against the wage study. It's just, you know, baffling. So I'm really, I'm really interested in the budget session and getting the board of commissioners or whoever in front of us as we find out, you know, road maintenance, drainage issues. You know, you know, this commissioner said, poor county doesn't have six and a half million dollars laying around, that we got to address all these issues. So how do we then give eight to 10 million dollars out to other organizations until we address our issues from internally? So, you know, and I've had some of these conversations, you know, with some individuals, and it seems like there's a consensus in that, you know, and the timing's right. So, you know, I'm not entirely sure what this commissioner is proposing for, you know, the funding sources, but I don't know, you know, currently there's countywide stormwater drainage issue and county road maintenance issues that will require millions of dollars to resolve. So we hand out eight to 10 million dollars to nonprofits and we raise taxes. Is that what, I mean, is that what this commissioner is proposing, to raise taxes? I'm not even sure, you know, but I think that's why it's important, you know, when the commissioners are in front of us, we get a good understanding of where we're headed with everything, you know, with, you know, the commissioners and what their, what their agenda is and goals next year. So, and I think they're on us October 11th. So, you know, that's just my thought as we move forward with this. The process is still going, as you can see, but it's not a, I never thought this council would be a rubber stamp to this. So it's, it's in front of us, and there is a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion or...
Yeah, if I could comment, and for all the reasons that have been stated repeatedly in terms of why it wouldn't, it wouldn't be wise to pass it in its entirety at this point. And, and there should be, there should be a pause. There should be, in light of the issues that have been brought forward by multiple people, including President Rivas, I mean, we've talked about the bridges and roads, and this was in an editorial that talked about all the woes of the county and how desperately behind we are in funding. It was bridges, it was roads, it was stormwater. And if we think for a minute that, and as the infrastructure facilities component of the money, you know, it talks about $3.4 million in failed stormwater systems, four projects, flood reduction systems, two projects. If there's anybody here that thinks those are the only problems or issues that we have throughout the county, they're sorely mistaken. I mean, we've got needs throughout the county in multiple, multiple areas. These are the most drastic, and of course they rise to the top because they're in dire straits. So they need to be fixed. But don't think for a second that that's going to take care of all the issues that are out there. So I would agree with the commissioner that we do have stormwater issues. There's no question about it. And they need to be, they need to be addressed, and they also need to be, you know, need to be funded. That doesn't take into consideration the situation we're dealing with, with wage study, which is significant. And we had our first meeting to kind of analyze and review the wage study information. It's the very beginning point of it, another meeting this week to talk about it. But to do what's right for the employees based on the wage study, that's going to cost a significant amount of money. And we have to be aware of that and well-prepared for that and, and make sure that we have the resources or the revenue ultimately to pay an appropriate or fair, fair wage. We talked about insurance and touched on that a bit. I mean, insurance premiums can vary greatly from year to year based on our program. It could vary two, three, four million dollars over the course, over the course of a year. And we need to be thinking about that and well-prepared for that so that we can ultimately do what's right by the county first. And I view this very much in a first things first sort of approach, to say, what are the most immediate needs? And I would say the most immediate, most immediate county needs, because that's what our charge is. And so I don't, and I'm not here to say what, what that's on the, on the current plan, what should be scaled back, what should be eliminated, you know, I'm not prepared to say that because I think that takes time. But as I mentioned before, you have one opportunity to do it right. There's excluding the infrastructure facilities and the county COVID response, which are primarily county-specific issues, you know, we're talking about nine, nine million dollars. And I think before we start writing checks, we have to be aware of the fact that it's one opportunity to do it right. And, and we, as much as it would be great if it's an infinite amount of money, then we'd start writing checks, and we'd also know that all our other needs are going to be ultimately cared for. But, but I don't think we're, we're there and we need to have additional discussion on those two specific subcommittees, and that would be the Behavioral Health and Social Services and also the nonprofits and employers. So personally, I'm not prepared to vote on those two subcommittees. And I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be wise to effectively write those checks tonight. And so I'm, I wouldn't be in favor, wouldn't be in favor of the motion.
I would just like to comment as well and just kind of segue off of Councilman Rivas and Councilman Jess, and I think Mike mentioned earlier, would you say, what term was that? Like the sins of our forefathers, you know, that we're, we're dealing with things, you know, now that have been occurring for, for years. And I think that the ARPA money was, is a great opportunity, but I agree that, that, you know, to vote on all four subcommittee categories tonight would be premature. I think that we want to get it right. And I agree, I think that our employees and the needs of most of the entire county should come first. And by, I think, you know, with that in mind, you know, the two subcommittees that deal with the infrastructure facilities and the COVID response, subcommittees are a lot of county needs. I think we touched on some tonight. I think we touched on some in our last meeting. We have a lot of challenges in front of us, and I think that as a council, we're charged to spend, this is taxpayer money, and spend it wisely and not rush to spend it. And to get it right, take care of our, our needs, our county needs, which includes our employees. We have a wage study staring at us in the face. We, we talked about health insurance this evening. Stormwater and roads keep coming up. And these are things that I think we owe to our county residents to prioritize. And, you know, as, as it stands, we're looking at close to $9 million in ARPA money that would go to majority of nonprofits. And, I mean, don't get me wrong, these non, these organizations do, do very good work. But I think as a county elected, county elected officials, we had to prioritize how we're going to spend this money. And again, I'm just going to say that, that I would like to, you know, look into further what our needs are going to be, you know, as this budget process moves forward. Before we, you know, agree or take a vote on at least two of the subcommittees on the, on the ARPA money, I would agree that I just, I just don't think we're ready to do that. I don't think we should do that. I think it would be a disservice to our, you know, to our employees.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I would repeat what I said last meeting. And we went out, we said, this is the new process. We, this deal that happened that was reflected poorly on all of us, we're going to undo that. We're going to get the public involved. We're going to give them an opportunity to get their voices heard. We're going to be on all the committees, the commissioners are going to be on all the committees, and we're going to move this process forward. So what are we telling all these people, all these nonprofits, these behavioral health services and social services, these people that all wasted their time to do applications? What was the point of doing any of that? Now we're going back and we're reversing it? Do you know how bad that looks on all of us? I mean, yeah, you got these things, these projects, but Jeremy, you've said before, we can do it all, and you know that. So I don't understand why we're not looking at passing what we said we would do. We're going back on what we said we would do. People's time was involved. Vicky, how many meetings did Vicky have to go to personally? And I'm not using you as an example, but I'm stating, we said this is the process. Now you say, well, hey, this commissioner and this person on the council are fighting, so, you know, screw this process, we're going to pass what we want to pass tonight, and now we're in a political battle. I think we need to pass it all. I think we're going to look pretty foolish if we don't. That's my opinion.
So I would just say, I don't think anything's being reversed or pulled back. I think we're, we're doing, in my opinion, we're doing our job here. We're reviewing it. I don't think anything's been removed, you know, that's in front of us. So we're, we're moving forward with the process. It's on the agenda.
But we're picking winners and losers now. We're the ones picking the winners and losers, and that's not right. That's what the committees were for. That's what the steering committee was for.
Again, my, my, what I'm picking right now is, is county-related funding. I'm picking right now somebody whose car fell in a...
I support it all. I want to do them and these.
What I'm picking right now.
I want to do that.
Would you amend your, our motion just for the infrastructure?
No, no, I want it all passed.
So...
I think we need to pass it all.
Well, if there's no further discussion, we'll see where it goes then. Get a roll call on passing all four of the categories, infrastructure facilities, behavioral health and social services, county COVID responses, and nonprofits and employers. And I don't know why Chelsea ran out of here.
She had to sit up there through all that.
Can we get a roll call on passing all four, you know?
Motion is to pass the entire plan as presented.
Correct.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Rivas?
No.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
No.
Councilmember Graham?
No.
Councilmember Jessen?
No.
And Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Okay, so we have five no's and two yeses, so motion fails.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion in reference to ordinance number 22-13, as adopted by the county commissioners on August the 2nd, 2022, and suggest that we take the two of the four subcommittees, infrastructure facilities in an amount of $7,174,513, and COVID, county COVID response in the amount of $2,926,246, and make the necessary appropriation to get those projects moving forward.
Second.
There's a motion, I think I heard a second, second on the floor, discussion? So is that motion appropriate then? I don't... For you, Madam Auditor?
Yes, just so that we're clarified, that we're all in agreement, you are approving every single project in those two categories, infrastructure and facilities and county COVID response.
As outlined on Exhibit A of the ordinance.
I wanted to add something here, just so you guys understand in the back, if I vote no, it's not that I'm voting no against it, the work couldn't happen this year, I'd still like to see it all get pushed through, just so you guys understand. That's my opinion.
So is that motion appropriate for you to go forward, Madam Auditor?
Sorry.
Is that motion appropriate for you to go forward? I mean, you have the breakdown?
That's appropriate, if that's what you wish to do.
All right, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion? If not, can we get a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
No.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham? Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Six to one, motion passes.
I want the infrastructure.
No, you did the right thing.
I want them to...
All right.
I want that go.
So...
I knew it would pass no matter what it did.
All right. I think that's all on the agenda, so Madam Auditor, you prepared for second reading?
Whereas it has been determined as now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriate in the annual budget, therefore be it resolved by the Porta County Council of Porta County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the tax unit, the following additional sums of money hereby appropriate out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. General fund, a total of $30,000. Firearms training fund, $4,000. Health department fund, motor vehicles, $225,000. Surveyor perpetuation fund, $27,000. Sheriff DEA proceeds fund, $65,000. Court interpreter grant fund, $9,000. And 21.027 ARPA COVID Fiscal Recovery Fund, a total of $10,10759. And that concludes second reading.
I'll entertain a motion on approving...
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, not too bad, eight, ten. So Harold, let me see, I think you're, you got anything?
Nothing in terms of going forward tonight. No news is good news.
All right, Harold, appreciate it, too. So any other matter to properly become for the council?
Without reading to the, moving to the 18th...
Which one?
Where you are counting to the 18th.
All right, I'll figure that out. I'll talk to the council, so, yeah. So, but right now, we're scheduled to be back here on October 4th for, for second reading as we get into our three nights of second reading. And I think, you know, we really have to, I'm looking forward to the conversation with the commissioners and the direction so we can figure out what needs to be funded, how they, how they plan on, you know, funding some of these things. For us to finalize any kind of decision, in my opinion, with the rest of that is knowing the commissioner's direction. So I guess, nobody's got anything. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, see you on the...